We'll resume tonight's meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Cordova.
Present.
Mayor Protam Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. City Attorney, action from closed session.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. City Council met in closed session to discuss three items on the closed session agenda. The first two items, labor negotiations with IBW and real property negotiations regarding an 82-acre site, including an adjacent to Cat Adam Park. Discussion was had with staff and direction was given by council, but no reportable action was taken. The third item, which was conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, by a unanimous vote, city council gave direction to initiate litigation in one case. The action, the defendants, and the other particulars of the litigation will be publicly available once the action is commenced.
Thank you. Now, if you'll please rise and join me in the invocation from Pastor Darrell Hunt and other pledge of allegiance to follow.
God of earth and heaven, I want to praise and thank you for our many varied blessings you pour out upon your creation, whether we stop to recognize it or not. Thank you for life itself, and though life comes with its own sets of challenges, thank you for walking with us through it all. Thank you for our freedom to choose, to accept you, and our freedom to reject you. For if we could not reject you, there's no point in our accepting you. God, we get to live and breathe on a beautiful piece of this earth. We are thankful for the hills and the valleys, the flowers and the friends, the ocean breeze and the great palm trees. You are really so, so good to us. And with this life, there are triumphs and tragedies, good times and hardships, times that all goes according to plan and times when nothing seems to be working out at all. But in all these times, I'm reminded about the saying printed on our money on that wall outside, "In God we trust." This is my last opportunity to pray at this podium and for the city council. God, I know that each one of these men and women at this dais tonight care deeply about this city. They may have different visions and plans for how to accomplish the betterment of this town, but God, they care. Please help this council to sift through all the good plans, plans for the budget, plans for public safety, plans for a sustainable future for this community. Help them sift through the good plans to find the right plan, the great plan. Help them to put aside prideful agendas or personal feelings and to come to decisions both tonight and in the weeks and months to come, decisions that will do the greatest good. God, I pray that you bless this council, bless this community and all who live and work in it. Bless our fire and police departments, our city employees and volunteers, bless owners, employers, and employees. Bless those who work in the nonprofit sectors and in healthcare, laboring for those whom they care so much for. This is a great community. Thank you for the privilege to say I love Lompoc. It is in your hallowed name we pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This past Saturday, I did present a proclamation for Relay for Life on Saturday, and I have heard that they are very close to meeting their $75,000 goal. So if you haven't contributed to their American Cancer Society program Relay for Life, please go to their website and do so, so they can meet their local goal of $75,000. It's very close. If I can have representation from the Public Works Department, meet me at the podium so we can do the proclamation for Public Works Week. It is National Public Works Week 2019. Whereas in 2019, National Public Work Week theme is "It Starts Here," this year, National Public Work Week celebrates the impact that many facets of public works have on modern civilization. And whereas public works, services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives as the cornerstone of civilization, public works provides, maintains, and improves the structures and services that assure a higher quality of life for our community. Its streets, roads, bridges, and public transportation keep us linked together from coast to coast, and its clean water and sanitation services keep us healthy and allow our communities to grow and prosper. And whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works, professional engineers, managers, and employees who are responsible for the planning, building, operations, and maintenance of transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, and public buildings essential to serve our citizens. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the City of Lompoc Public Works Department, and whereas the year 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week, and it should be recognized as "It Starts Here," this year, National Public Works Week celebrates the impact the many facets of public works have on a modern civilization. Now, therefore, I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim National Public Works Week from May 19th through the 25th, 2019. Thank you to all our employees who make a beautiful community and keep it running so that we just flip a light, we just flush a toilet, we just turn on the water faucet, and everything comes out running smoothly. So, thank you.
Thank you on behalf of all the Public Works employees and the utility employees for the city, for all they do. Thank you. And I just wanted to pass out one of these stickers to all the council members. It's a campaign that the American Public Works Association is putting on for the public works first responders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a few items tonight. We'll make it a quick one. Our next budget workshop will be Tuesday, May 28th, at 6:30 here in the council chambers. We hope everybody can come out and participate in that again. Monday, the day before, Monday, the 27th, city offices will be closed for Memorial Day observance. And the other one, I want to get it geared up now, is we're going to be beginning to get ready for the 2020 census. It's important that everyone respond to the census, as this allows us to gain more and a better allotment of the federal and state dollars. So the more we can have people respond to the census, the better it is for us in the end. So that'll be coming more and more as we get closer to the actual census happening.
And I do know that the census is looking for individuals to work for the census. So if you go to the Census 2020 website, you can apply for and work the census, and they do need bilingual and locals who know the neighborhoods to participate in that. Councilmember Starbuck.
Mr. Tru, could you also interject about the Coastal Commission hearing postponement?
Yes, actually, that one, we sent in our response for the snowy plover to the Coastal Commission. The mayor actually drove it down. She was going to the meeting. I did not have a chance to get down there. They did continue the meeting, I believe. I'm looking at the mayor for confirmation. They continued it to another date, and so we do have that information with them. We'll try and get some more information that we can gather and submit that for the hopeful possible opening of Surf Beach year-round rather than only a few months a year.
The base did request to pull the item because they were going to make changes to their report, and then it'll come back at the July meeting, which will be in San Luis Obispo. Any other questions for City Manager? Councilmember Mosby.
No, if I had something at the end of the meeting during council time, but I had something, because I've been working on the snowy plover deal for a while, but I put together, because it's been suggested that if we had signatures, it would help. And the letter that the City Manager wrote, because they had it on a consent calendar and not expecting any public comment to come through, with the letter there, we were able to catch him off guard a little bit, and it was mentioned that if we would get signatures, it could help enhance our movement. And...
So maybe like we did with LAFKA, sorry to interrupt, but like with LAFKA, what if we were also to create a letter that everyone could then send in individually? Is that something that might...
What I have here is it's a petition drive.
Oh, okay.
To potentially get signatures out there. I know it's, and there's only time, but if the mayor would let me maybe offer this up to the people, to council members and such, to potentially, and businesses who might be interested and such, to get out, because I think if we could get a few thousand signatures to go to Sacramento, I think it's San Francisco where it ends up this time.
San Francisco.
And if we could get this, I think it would really... We got a chance. I think we really do have a chance, so...
Mr. Malave, would you weigh in on the proper way to handle this, so that we don't misstep and create something that...
Councilmember Mosby, are you just interested in passing that out to the council members?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. I guess council comments would be an appropriate time to do that, but if you want to move council comments up to now, that's...
I just wanted to segue just with what the City Manager was doing, and in fact, I'll wait till the end then. No problem.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for City Manager? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar, all items listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Public comment on consent calendar is open. It's for three minutes. If there is an item on consent calendar that you would like to speak to, please come forward Seeing no one rise regarding consent calendar, I will close it and bring it back to council. I will either entertain a motion or if there were any items that would like to be pulled. Councilmember Vega.
I'll make a motion that we accept consent calendar in its whole.
I'll second.
And we have a second for Mr. Starbuck. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Tonight, we don't have any staff presentations, announcements, or requests on the agenda, so we will move to oral communications. This is your three minutes to state concerns regarding city matters or bring something
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I'm here regarding the budget shortfall. For decades, local government has rejected proposals for housing and business development. At the same time, adding administrative positions and granting generous increases to keep up with the cost of living in this high-tax, minimal-services state. Restrictive zoning and burdensome regulations tighten the noose around the citizen taxpayer's neck. Sacramento doubles down on forcing citizens and businesses out of California. While the gas tax smothers this commuter state, the governor questions why gas prices are highest in California. Thanks to state leaders, criminals can steal up to $949 a day or possess cocaine, heroin, or methamphetamine, and if caught, be charged with merely a misdemeanor. Violent crimes now considered nonviolent include, but are not limited to, trafficking of a child, abducting a minor for prostitution, rape by intoxication, rape of an unconscious person, or various other sexual assaults if the victim is unconscious. All are now nonviolent crimes. Nonviolent crimes include a drive-by shooting, assault with caustic chemicals, felony domestic violence, felony assault with a deadly weapon, serial arson. Police are expected to exhaust all other means available prior to using deadly force. How do you recruit police to serve in an environment of legislated anarchy? Healthcare, housing, education, services, and various, and waivers, excuse me, of laws are promoted for illegal immigrants while mentally ill and addicted citizens live in filth on our streets or are jailed. Sacramento moves repeatedly to centralize local zoning at the state level. The state taxes us but does not represent us or serve our needs for health and safety. The jig is up. I urge you to open up Lompoc for success. Claw back state taxes and laws which serve to endanger and enslave us. Eliminate regulations and zoning unrelated to health and safety. Rescind earlier council actions that throttled back our economy. You can't tax your way out of bad government policies. Reject centralized control of our economy, safety, and freedom.
Good evening, Mayor Osborne and council members. Tool Patel, Principal Correspondent of the Holiday Inn Express, in reference to utilities landscape meters. Last year, we had a cost audit of our new Hilton Garden Inn. In that audit, it was discovered that the design professional had put in a water meter that was much too large for the irrigation system of our landscaping. I want to thank the city staff for helping with that change out to the correct meter size, which reduced our cost every month. That issue caused me to look at our metering at the Holiday Inn Express, where I found we did not have a separate water meter for the irrigation system of our landscaping. So I hired a contractor and had that put in. Again, the city was very helpful. But when the first bill came in for the two meters, I noticed that my sewer charge did not change or go down as I expected. In talking with city staff, I learned that it would take seven years for my sewer bill to fully correct because of the averaging system used by the city. For every other use, the seven years averaging looks like a fair system. For someone that installs an irrigation meter, it is not fair. Once the irrigation meter is installed, the main meter has all of the water used that in turn goes down the sewer. That meter reading should determine the sewer charge, not a seven-year average of the old bills that did not measure actual use. I have heard it said in council meetings many times that under state law utility, customers can only be billed for utility service they use. Because of this unfair charge to those of us that put in an irrigation meter, I am asking three of the council members to instruct staff to put an item on a future council agenda to change from seven years averaging to a sewer charge based on the actual water use of the main meter when businesses put in an irrigation meter. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck.
Mr. Patel, at the very beginning here, you referenced that you're representing the Holiday Inn Express. You said that you had a meter that you changed, and then you, where was that meter?
So, at the Hilton when we opened up.
The Hilton, then.
That was, and then, so we had it changed with the help of the city to having a landscaping irrigation meter put in. So then I went back and looked at our other business.
At the Holiday Inn.
And that's when we put in an irrigation meter there, and that's why. But the billing for the sewer charge didn't change, so, thank you.
Mayor, council members, and staff, my name is Sue Copeland, and I'm a resident of Lompoc Valley. I'm coming to you again to state my concerns about the closed sessions that happened again tonight in regards to the 82 acres adjacent to and including Cat Adams Park regarding the price and terms of payment. You have met several times in closed session with no public discussion or disclosure regarding the potential agreement to sell the 82 acres of public land without an open bid or request process to Pale Blue dot LLC. As you are aware, the Santa Barbara District Attorney's Office is already investigating this possible Brown Act violation. And I've had several community members ask me, what is Brown Act? So I'll just say quickly that it is having discussions and making deals behind closed doors without public comment. And recently, we have been advised to escalate this to the state level. The city staff and council have never resolved with the California Space Center the illegal discussion previously that resulted in the issuing of the notice of default after spending the $25,000 that was fronted by California Space Center for future city fees. And by the way, none of that money was ever returned. The city and the council also do not recognize the $150 million letter from the international VCs that Ms. Blaisdell secured in a matter of months, and now those sources are considering bringing a suit against the city. I've requested a meeting with both the mayor and with the city manager, and both have refused to meet with me. Neither are interested in hearing about our work and promotion that is being done in and for our valley. So I will update the council and the community in a public forum on some of the current activities and accomplishments of the California Space Center, Lady Rocket Foundation, and Copernic Space, all of which I am a co-founder with Eva Blaisdell, and all which have already benefited the Lompoc Valley and could immensely change our valley and economy. Over the last four years, Lompoc and Vandenberg Air Force Base have continually been promoted as we have met with government officials at the federal, state, and local levels throughout California and internationally, along with Realtors, VCs, and of course, our youth. Recently, we partnered with Huntsville, Alabama's new incubator, the Institute for Exotic Science, to commercialize space technology. We are currently reviewing the products with the greatest potential for development, both locally and in Huntsville. We'll be hosting the institute at the upcoming June 11 SpaceX launch here in Lompoc. We have signed an NDA with Booz Allen Hamilton. Now, General Oberling, a former commander of the Air Force Base, is part of them in regards to, and our NDAs in regards to developing technology for the U.S. Air Force and for NASA's use.
Did a wrap-up, Ms. Copeland?
Yeah, I've got several other items that I would love to share with you, and I would love to have more than three minutes at some point to share all of our activities and our letters. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. John Lynn Lompoc resident. I wanted to provide the council with some information to correct some statements at our recent budget workshop. First, this is an excerpt from the Santa Maria website dealing with their police department contract. It was stated at the meeting that they had a 17% pay increase. I think it's actually 10.5, but you can read it all and verify for yourselves. We also had a discussion a while back about using county dispatch for our fire department, or, I'm sorry, for our police and fire, and I do not recall that report ever coming back to council. I could have missed it, but I did get a copy from the clerk. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I wanted to provide a copy to all of you for that. And then there was a discussion on the Fire Station One retrofit, and the slideshow listed $8 million as the cost. That does not appear to be correct. I also have for you copies of that report. Councilmember Starbuck will recall that this actually happened clear back in 2014 when he and I were on the council together, but no copy of it was ever provided to the council while I was on the council, and I do not believe it was ever provided later. I did take a cursory search through the city's website, and I was unable to find any reference to it, that it was provided to council. Clearly, I'm not an engineer, but I have been involved in a lot of construction projects, and if you'll take the time to look at the costing on that, it certainly is different from anything I've ever seen before. There's contingency fees on top of contingency fees. So I encourage each of you to talk to a construction professional that you have faith in. And then finally, I had intended to do some research on the amount of money that the fire department had deducted from its budget over the last 20 years toward the purchase of new engines. Unfortunately, time ran out, and I don't have that for you, but I hope to have it at the next meeting. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, council, community. Mark Hashemalik. I've been in the community 16 years now. I worked with mental health. I've done some homeless outreach. I did our triage center. Right now, I had a generous local farmer donate to our bridge house to cover the old greenhouses out there. They were all dilapidated, just frames, so they put plastic and siding on them, and they're somewhat ready to be planted. So I'm going to try and make a community garden out there for those that are experiencing homelessness. I'm hoping that the community can get behind us this Saturday and Sunday. I'll be there from 1:00 to 6:00 for any volunteers that want to come out and bring some hose, gloves, rakes, whatever. We're just going to clear it up and clean it up, hopefully get a vegetable garden so they can do their own gardening and run it themselves. So this is just a community effort to get it going and started and cleaned. And it's taken me a while. It's been a long time planned and dreamed, seeing those frames out there. It's just kind of been put together recently. Good Samaritan's somewhat behind it. We're trying to just get all the Ts crossed and dotted Is. And so it's a slow process, but I would like to see people this weekend. If you want to volunteer, please come out. I think it's going to be great for those that are there. They've already been very excited about getting started. It's just a big process to get it cleaned up, like to do vegetables and fruit trees and such, so they can provide fresh vegetables for those that are out there. For those that know me as a cannabis adversary, this has nothing to do with my cannabis lifestyle or life. There will be no cannabis out there. This is strictly a vegetable garden. So please come out this Saturday or Sunday from 1:00 to 6:00. Thank you.
Hello, council members. My name is Eric Mendoza, representing La Roca Bakery here in town. In November of 2018, we received a notice from the Lompoc Waste Water Division stating we needed to install a grease trap after they came to the bakery and saw our washing. We have operated La Roca Bakery for over 20 years and have had only one sewer line stoppage. That was caused by hair from the barber shop in the building that shares our sewer line. We produce no grease, laden waste that would require a grease trap. Grease traps that the city has forced other Lompoc businesses to install, which have no grease flow, are a stinky mess. They have to be bailed out every week or two and capture no grease. We went to City Hall to file appeal in March, and we're told we could not file the appeal. Later, the city attorney said we could file the appeal, so we went back to the City Hall and filed the appeal. Next, we got a letter from Brad Wilkey at the city saying our appeal was denied, followed by a letter from the city attorney threatening big fines for the grease we do not have. If we had put grease in the sewer for the last 20 years, we would have plugged our pipes many times. We do not want a stinky trap. We have to bail out every two weeks that catches no grease and costs thousands of dollars to install. I am here tonight to ask three of you on the council to put our appeal on the council agenda for a future council meeting, so we can have a public hearing of our appeal. Thank you for listening.
Hello, Mayor and council members. Michelle Franco, representing Build Out Pros LLC, general contractors. We are currently completing tenant improvements for our new dental office located at 1009 North H Street, Unit P. This location was formerly occupied by Sears Retail Store. We submitted the plans for tenant improvement package to the city on November 19th, 2018, and received our building permit on March 26th, 2019. In the process of plan approval, the building division added a requirement for the installation of two electric vehicle charging stations. A careful review of the California Building Code by our architect showed that because of the size of our project, the code did not require the installation of these two vehicle charging stations. We... charging stations. We requested that the requirement be removed, but the building division declined to do so. The cost of the installation of these two charging stations is at minimum $40,000 based on our estimates from our subcontractors. Section 1.8.8 of the California Building Code provides that contractors can appeal decisions of the building division to the City of Lompoc Appeals Board. In the City of Lompoc, there is no appeals board, and so the city manager has stated in writing that the appeals board is the city council. This is our appeal of the building division decision requiring the addition of the installation of the two electric vehicle charging stations to the project requirements. We ask the council to place this appeal on the next council meeting agenda date for which the statutory deadlines can be met. If our tenant improvement project is completed prior to the appeal hearing, we request that a temporary certificate of occupancy be issued until the appeal is heard by the council.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment. Before we move on for public comment, would the city attorney please clarify appeals to council and the proper process for that?
For the appeal that was brought up by the last speaker, there is a process for appealing the decisions of the building official. We would ask that the speaker please present that appeal in writing in a letter to city clerk or the city manager, because we need to assess the timeliness of the appeal, and it also, we need it in writing for the city's records. And she is correct that the city council is the building appeals board, so it will come to the council if she submits it in writing.
Thank you. We now have appointments. We have two commissions that have vacancies that we have applications for. We do have a couple of committees and commissions that have vacancies, but we don't have applications for those. So if you're interested, please visit our website and see what's available, and the applications are there. The first is the youth commission. There are two positions available for 1/2020, and there's a second one position available for different ranking. We have two applicants that are Bianca Gonzalez and Tyler Rainwater, and I would open the floor for nominations. Councilmember Cordova.
I would like to nominate Bianca Gonzalez as a youth commissioner.
Do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
We have a second? Any discussion? Would that be for the, one of the 1/2020 expirations? Okay. So there is a motion on the floor, and no discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. And then I'll go ahead and make the motion for Tyler Rainwater to take the second position that expires in 1/2020, and would like a second.
I'll second.
And there's our second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. The second committee that has an opening is the planning commission. That position is an appointment by councilmember Mosby that expires in December of 2020, and we have an applicant, Steve Bridge. And for clarification, Mr. Bridge is on the Parkson Rec and will need to resign from that if appointed to planning, correct? Okay. That has been accepted? Okay. I hadn't seen that. All I'd seen was the application. Open the floor, councilmember Mosby.
I'd like to make an appointment of Steve Bridge to planning commission to fill my position.
I'll second.
Councilmember Starbuck, seconds? All right, we have a move and second. Any discussion? And let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right, public hearing, item number five, consideration of planning commission recommendations for approval of the comprehensive update to Title 17 of the Lompoc Municipal Code. Planning manager Brian Halverson to make the presentation.
No real presentation tonight, Mayor, members of the council. The planning division has been working hard to get a zoning code update back to you, but we are requesting an extension to the June 4 meeting. I will, I would like to say that we just posted the redline copies of the zoning code on our website yesterday, so the public can go and look at those redline versions of the code. Essentially, that's the planning commission and the city council recommendations. So those are now posted to our website, and basically, in order, if you consider this extension tonight, that will allow us more time to work with staff, the departments, the public, and we actually already have a draft staff report to the city attorney's office that's under review right now. So we would request that extension to the June 4 meeting. I'm available for any questions.
Councilmember Mosby.
Seeing how grand of a deal you're doing with this zoning code update in the great book, would it be of an inconvenience to take it to the following council meeting?
So not the June 4?
Yeah.
We certainly, if that's what the council desires.
And I guess that would be the 18th.
So with this, sorry, Mayor, I just want to clarify that what we do need, since this is a public hearing, so the staff does not need to republish the notice of the public hearing, we need a motion to continue the public hearing to a date certain, whatever the council wishes that date to be.
Councilmember Cordova.
Just question, if we're anticipating any major changes or more changes than what we were looking at before, would we consider noticing the public again, based on the amount of changes?
We would prefer not to renotice. It's very, very costly, and since we have been talking about the budget lately, we would prefer to not renotice. We have a very good website up that shows everything that we've been working on. We've been doing, we have been doing over the life of this project, good public outreach as well, so we'd really prefer not to do that. If you want to know the numbers, it's about $1,000 to renotice, and so we really, really would prefer not to do that. That's the noticing paper and everything that goes with that. Okay? At least expensive, I'm being told, is a notice in the paper. But with all the different properties and everything, it's very costly. I will say, as far as the changes, there's about 11 recommendations from the planning commission, and most of those topics are related to what the council had directed the planning commission to talk about. There were some other ones that were brought up, including a couple from staff. So there isn't really a lot that's new, but as you know, some of the issues are challenging, and so it's taking a little longer than what we anticipated.
Before we move on the recommendation of councilmember Mosby, we do need to open the floor to public comment. Thank you. We'll open the floor for public comment on this item.
One quick thing, John Lynn Lompoc resident, I would ask the council to inquire from staff when the noticing was last given and how many chain meetings we've had since then to kind of gauge how well informed the public is. Thank you.
Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Councilmember Mosby.
Mr. Halverson? Couple of questions were asked by public. Did you answer them?
Sure. Mr. Lynn had a question about the last time it was noticed. So we noticed it, I believe, I'd have to check the file, but for that February meeting that we had, that was the last council meeting that we had, was February, I believe, it was February 18? Yeah, sounds about right. And the second question, I'm sorry, he asked a second one, as far as the public outreach? I'm trying to remember his other.
How many changes and such affect people? How many parcels and such? Oh, no.
His question was how many meetings we had after the denification, correct? Yes.
Well, we've had a total of five planning commission meetings, and we had the single council meeting, so six meetings total. Okay, so there's been quite a few. And then, of course, before I was part of the zoning ordinance update, there was a lot of workshops, and there was a lot of public outreach leading up to this document, as well as the sign ordinance, which we have adopted now, so that's a plus. We did make it through that process.
Mr. Halverson, I just want to add that the last public noticing for the council was done for the February council meeting. After that, there was only one planning commission meeting. Isn't that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, that would be the fifth planning.
And there was a newspaper notice that was published for that planning commission meeting, I believe.
I believe, you're correct.
Yes. So there's only one planning commission meeting since February, the last time the council meeting was noticed, and then today is the first council meeting after that February council meeting.
Correct.
Well, I would like to move forward with my motion of changing the date to the 18th to give a little more time to gather everything, if that would be doable. It gives us a little more time.
Absolutely, it would give us more time.
Councilmember Vega.
Councilmember Mosby, I'd like to clarify why the time is needed. Is it needed for the council, or is it needed for the planning commission to gather information? Or is this just an extension of time to give us a little bit more time for something?
Myself is getting out, and I've been to every one of the planning commission's meetings except for one, so I've been in contact with a number of people. I just want to make sure that the documents, you see that that book is massive. So to go back through now, the redline document is coming out and available. There's 270-some-odd pages to cross-reference back and forth again, and coming up at this timeframe, personally myself, I won't have time to finish by June the 4th.
Okay, thank you for answering.
Councilmember Cordova.
I would agree with councilmember Mosby, just because being the new kid on the block, I would want enough time to look at that also.
Is that a second to his motion?
That is.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion regarding the motion? All right, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Halverson. Item number six, new business, hearing of former property owner's appeal of ruling on request for reconsideration of utility director enforcement of Lompoc Municipal Code Section 13.16.04, connection to public sewer required, 209 West Pine Street, sewer lateral service protest, and Mr. Brad Wilkie, utility director, will do that presentation. Councilmember Mosby.
I will need to recuse myself. I own property within 500 foot.
All right, thank you. And we will wait for him to step down.
Good evening, Mayor Osborne, council members. This item was requested by the representative for the property owner to reconsider my utility director recommendation that the property owner follow through on the covenant that was on the properties for 209, and I believe it's 203 West Pine Street, which is a property that housed the former DMV facility. It was split, I think, around 2006 into two lots, one in the back, one in the front. At that point in time, the single property before that was served by a single lateral to Pine Street. Since that time, there's been a number of planning projects that have been gone on with that. The property was sold in 2018, possibly early 2019. I can't remember when the closing date was. But in 2014, the property owner signed a covenant that required the property to provide for two separate laterals connecting to the city's sewer main on Pine Street, and that was not done. And the property owner, the representative of the property owner, has appealed the decision to have that work done. The property is in trust. The representative, Mr. Sabani, is here. He would like to make a presentation on this, and I can continue on, but I think it might be a good time to allow that presentation.
Okay. Mr. Sabani, please step forward.
You want to do the control yourself? Yes. Yes. Honorable mayor and member of the council, this issue came up sometime back. This project has, this building has gone before the city planning commission in 2006 when we subdivided the property to two parcels. At that time, first of all, I apologize, I have not used this thing before. Thank you. It went before the planning commissions, and they reviewed the project. The sewer line on the east side of property existed for four, five decades and has worked perfectly, designed per city, generic standard, constructed per city approved, and is a petrified clay pipe, has never been, has never required any maintenance. At that time, you could see at the last page of this document, can you see the item, see from the water department and sewer department, staff approved the thing, and they did not require that we add anything. At that time, city staff at the utility department were willing to accept that 300 feet of petrified clay pipe, if we provide them the easement that they could maintain the line by constructing a manhole at the beginning of the line. We didn't pay attention to it because the property was vacant, we didn't know, I mean, was vacant, and we did not know what we were going to be doing with the property. At one time, we said that we were going to submit a plan to the city to see that we're going to, yeah, seize condominium, we're going to build condominium. So we didn't know what the future would be. So we just left it as it was. Then in 2000, later on, California State came up there, they wanted to convert that first building to DMV. We had a two-inch water line serving that building and the back building, which was empty, neither one of them. So we constructed the, we remodeled the building for DMV, they started using it. Again, city did not bring out the use of that six-inch sewer line. It's not a four-inch lateral, it's a six-inch petrified clay pipe, which is adequate to serve in a residential street, about 75, 80 homes. So then, so went on, and by the way, city ordinance had changed during this time, the only change they made, they used to charge sewer fee a flat rate, but then changed it to, what do you call, correlated the charge for the sewer based on the water consumption. So in 2014, when we submitted the plan for doing the back building for Department of Agriculture, the director of Public Works said, Morris, we might have an issue charging the fee if you have just one water meter, two inch in the front. So he suggested we, as long as, as long as you're the property owner, no problem. But in the event you sell this property, the front or one of the parcel, then city might have a problem how to charge the sewer fee to both buildings. So I said, that's understandable, and we had two options. One was here to give, let me show you this plan here. See, this option was available. Can you all see? This shows, is there a light here? Something? this option was available, can you all see, this shows, is there a light here, something? Oh, I tried to, but anyway. Well, anyway, you could see on the right side where Pine Avenue is, the sewer line, the city sewer line is on Pine Avenue, and our lateral, the six-inch line is going from Pine Avenue going north to the backside of the building. And so one option was here to dedicate that six-inch line to the city, and city will maintain, all we had to do, just construct a manhole at the end of the line to, that the city could maintain that line. We could have done it, but then I found that if I do that, that means I have to pay two, three hundred dollars a month for a vacant building because of the water line. So we said, well, we will just wait till we such time we have a use for the building or something. Anyway, so they agreed, and we agreed to that covenant that we will provide separate water line and sewer line. So last year, when we sold the building to the church, we said, all right, now is the time to do it. So in December, I went to the city water department, got a permit to install, to separate the water line. I removed, we removed the two-inch line and put two three-quarter inch line and connected directly, one to the front building, one to the back building. We complied with, but we had, the covenant was. Then they came into question of sewer line. Now, Mr. Wilkie said, no, before Mr. Wilkie, the previous, I can't think of the name of the gentleman. And the engineering department and the building department said, well, we should comply with it. I said, fine, we will comply. So we had three options. One was here to go dedicate the six-inch sewer line to the city that they could maintain and separate the water meter. All right, so we proposed that. Then the second option was here to build a manhole, have a private line up to the DMV line and build a manhole, and then the last hundred feet, city will maintain. The engineering department said, no, we don't want to maintain anything. So the last option, I'm sorry, this map, I brought this map to show you what we could, I'm sorry. This alternate, I'm sorry, alternate three, they said, if you leave, maintain the three hundred feet of this line, but when you get to the street right away, which was Pine Avenue, you construct a cleanout, put separate line for the both building, and at that point, you connect them, and that existing six-inch line on the city right away will be used for both properties. That made sense because at that point, that's that last thirty, forty feet, there's a six-inch line, and the new line is buried about fourteen feet down, the city put that line way down deep. So we had to call, we had to open up Pine Avenue, which is, the city spent almost three-quarter million dollars to build that road. So we had to, they would have required for us to open that road, a big hole, about maybe fourteen feet by fourteen feet by ten, fourteen feet deep, to get to the line to put a four-inch line in. So it made sense to connect the two lines together at that point for the last thirty-five feet for city to maintain. And city issued us a permit. Stop, sorry. What am I doing? I'm not getting to anything. Somebody help me? Huh? I'm sorry. Well, there's a, anyway, I have a copy of the permit I handed to you here. You should pass this thing. On this, January, they issued a permit for us to construct alternate three to maintain this line. And then we don't have to tear up Pine Avenue and so forth. But then, staff changed, and they interpreted the code differently, and now, for the past five months, we've been waiting to see what decision they make. And I feel this alternate four, just building a cleanout at the end, oh yeah, here it is, we got the permit. So city should not, city should honor that permit. Although staff changes, why are they trying to make us to change this thing? So we should honor that permit and let us go, proceed with constructing that cleanout, and build a four-inch line for the church to that point, and the last thirty feet would be maintained by the city, if there was maintenance required. For the past fifty years, never has any maintenance been required for that line. What we are asking, we are not asking something that would impact the city's, what do you call, collection system, nor impact the city wastewater treatment plan. So I request that you consider allowing us alternate three to proceed with this thing as is permitted by the city.
Thank you, Mr. Sabani.
Thank you.
Mr. Sabani, I'm looking at the special covenant here that was part of our package that showed that, you did sign
Right.
that water and sewer are separate. Now, first look at this, where it's split the sewer and water, what you're trying to do in a nutshell here is you're going to split the sewer, but rather than dig up Pine Street, you want to connect it on the easement that the city has.
In the city right away.
Put four inches into the six, and then let that go six inch to the city's main line in the middle of Pine Street.
Right. That has worked for the past fifty years, and city has similar situation in many locations, Edith Grill and different places. In fact, across the street, Rainbow Plaza, they have a six-inch line, that apartment complex, they have six-inch line. As far as the engineer, I'm sorry.
I just have another question. Could you put the map up there and somebody use the red pointer and show me where this line is and what you propose to do?
Well, I don't, I mean...
I saw the pointer, the red pointer, but it was up on the ceiling.
I'm sorry, I should have really practiced on this thing before I came here. Do you have a, no, it doesn't show very well.
Doesn't show, there it is.
I have a...
Here it is, I'm on the, see it on the screen right now? Tell me where you want it.
Yeah, see this, all right, okay, thank you.
Just start at the bottom and pull it out.
Okay. Sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. The six-inch line we are talking is go from here, oh, I'm sorry, a six-inch line, let's go for the Pine Avenue. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, what do you do that to, show the Pine Avenue, six-inch sewer line.
The red line right here.
Yeah. That red line is a sewer line existing, and it goes to Pine Avenue, goes up and down. Oh, yeah, that's the line. So what we are saying, the first alternate is here, we are willing to give that right away, ten-foot right away to the city from that point on the left side, I'm sorry. All the way there, that was the decision, that was the discussion we had with the previous, or recall the time, two thousand and fourteen, that they will accept that right, that dedication of that easement, and they will accept the sewer line. And we did not, we said, we didn't know what we would be doing with that property. Therefore, we said, no, at this time, we'd like to postpone. We entered in the covenant that if we sell the property, any one of those parcel, we will separate it. So separation means we, city could accept the line, or we could do something that city would receive their fee, there would be no argument as far as, so we put two water meter, city get their sewer fee and water fee separately, there's no argument. As far as the line goes, so we have offered three things. Either accept the six-inch line from the north to the south, alternatively, we could build a manhole at two oh nine West Pine, that will, I mean, that building, that could, and then pull a four-inch line from that point on to the property line. The last alternate will be the least response view of the city, the last thirty feet in the city right away, you, city accept the last thirty-nine feet. And we build a cleanout for access. And we also build a four-inch line from the old DMV to that cleanout.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Mr. Wilkie, could you point that out up here, where that cleanout would be?
Cleanout would be right, right there, well, he's showing, right, there, somewhere in that neighborhood, right behind the right away of the city, where the sidewalk, the concrete sidewalk ends.
So that's city easement, right, Mr. Wilkie?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, would there be harm with this? I mean, it would appear to be a compromise if Mr. Sabani would split the lines and then come in and do them there rather than tear up Pine Street. I mean, I could, the expenses got to be unbearable there for that, to do that. What would be the disadvantage of putting that in and tying it in?
Yes, I'm sorry. So one of the things that is a liability for almost every agency that has a sewer utility is the liability for sewer backups into homes, businesses, and the like, from blockages that are in the city's collection lines. So if we were to accept that, I don't know if it's exactly thirty-nine feet, just going to use that as what's being said, if we accept that thirty-nine feet of lateral for the purposes of this compromise that you're suggesting, then one of these two properties could cause a backup that's in that thirty-nine feet, that could back up into one or the other, or both of the units, and we would be responsible for that because we have taken over the responsibility of maintenance and accepting that as part of the sewer collection line. So that is why the city's ordinance states that... Pardon me for this. The ordinance for Section thirteen sixteen oh four zero, I've highlighted for your convenience that section on page one of the staff report, and connect the said lateral to the sewer main. It doesn't say connect the sewer lateral to somebody else's sewer lateral, it says to connect to the city's sewer main. So the other issue would be if the city were to accept this, as in your words, as a compromise, the cost of doing that extension, we would be accepting that additional liability for that line, but we would also be basically giving a benefit to this property owner, the cost of what would otherwise have to be done. We're basically giving away city funds to provide this compromise. Because the property owner's not doing the work, I would suggest to our wastewater utility to include that separation at a later date so that we can give back the two lines to the property owners, so we absolve ourselves of that future potential liability. As again, I mentioned, one of the two largest liability issues that cities that have sewer systems is subject to are sewer backups. And the other one is related to public safety.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, well, I think in this case, though, again, we're looking at how many, how many private, you know, properties have six-inch laterals also as part of it. We're talking shopping center here, if I'm not mistaken. I think there was a car wash back there for phone company trucks at one time that never had issues. I really, I just don't want to dig up Pine Street, and I just don't see that we can't do something here where...
That was brought up by the, I apologize for interrupting, that was brought up by the representative of the parcel several times to Public Works, and Public Works, this happens all the time. If somebody wants to hook into the sewer line, they connect to the sewer line. So using that argument that not to dig up Pine, to allow us to take on the responsibility and the liability of a future sewer backup, and again, sewer backups are the second most common liability that cities pay out on, it would, I wouldn't recommend that. The other side of it is, in talking with the wastewater supervisor who's in charge of the collection line, there is no other spot in the city that provides for a single lateral or even a double lateral hooking into the city line using a common lateral. The situations that Mr. Sabani was talking about, he's mentioned common areas for, say, condos, but those condos have individual properties that are owned, not necessarily the underlying ground, but there's individual properties that are owned and provide those services and provide those costs. They share the cost of that lateral all the way up to the line.
Is there a lateral on Oak, or I mean, is there a sewer line on Oak Street?
No, there's not. That was looked at by Mr. Sabani and by Doran, the collection line. The closest one on Oak is actually in Eighth Street. So if we were to do that, which would be a great, for the city, would be great because it would extend the sewer line from this property on Oak and provide future abilities for others on Oak Street to connect to that line and make it, make the system a little bit better. But that was not proposed, that was not recommended, that was not something that was brought up because there is no line in that, that area.
All right. I'll tell you, Mr. Wilkie, what I'm really looking for here is some kind of a solution that sends a business friendly out, too. I mean, Mr. Sabani holds numerous properties here and has developed them unlike a lot of people that own properties and haven't. And I don't know, Mr. Sabani, could you give me a guess of what it would cost to put this in?
Yeah. First of all, I, Mr. Wilkie's response testing, the probability of some feeling that this is extreme case to bring an argument, which never happened. For fifty years, this line has been there and never backed up. A six-inch vetrified clay pipe, I'm an engineer, I've designed this in many years. Vetrified clay pipe lasts forever. The only enemies of the vetrified clay pipe, if you have a tree or roots of the trees, they attract to the joint and because the nutrient isn't the thing. The probability of this line will never happen, what he's, he's using hypothetical case to deny, accommodate the city. I think, first of all, a thirty-nine feet or thirty feet line is such a short distance. Why would it do it? Because it drops down, it's a drop, you know, it's not a lateral, just easy Y. That line is fourteen feet deep, our sewer line is five feet. So in thirty-nine feet, it has to be, has to be a sudden drop. Nothing will back up, there's no, there's no grease. These are two office buildings. That would never happen. I think it's unreasonable. First of all, four predecessor of him have looked at this thing, they never were out of this thing. They always accepted. They wanted to accept that six-inch line because it's maintenance free. And now they're arguing about thirty-nine feet, is it better to accept that line or tear up the road? You spent three-quarter million, three-quarter million dollars to rebuild that road. And it's not an easy connection. Well, if you made me to do it, so I have to do it, but I'm going to tear up your road and rebuild it, and it's going to cost a fortune. I offered to say, hey, it's not the question of money. I'm willing to pay them the money to say, well, they received some money. I'm not trying to save money. I'm trying to maintain a orderly development in the city, and this is not orderly. The city has worked, the city, the line has been there for fifty years and worked, and suddenly, one gentleman comes in, he interpret the code his way. Previously, four other director has interpreted the way they allowed me to do it. And not only that, just in December, they gave me a permit to do what I'm proposing. Does that give you a rationale to accept this thing? I think, Mr. Wilkie, is very unreasonable.
And he's trying to deny it?
And I, you know, this should not have come to the council, really. If they were reasonable and good engineering judgment had been used. This is the kind of stuff you're hiring nowadays.
Mr. Sabani, I...
I'm sorry about this, I've just had it from the city. They're killing all the businesses, everything. They're killing all the businesses, everything else, and you're trying to just put a little small sewer line, he's going to argue something that is not applicable. I've been in this business for forty-two years, none of the property owner, as a civil engineer, I've designed many sewer line, I could, I offered, I will, I will accept full responsibility for maintaining that line for the next five, ten years.
I appreciate all your offers, I appreciate your input. I have other questions we need to ask of staff. Mr. Wilkie, according to the paperwork that's been submitted, that's on record, the agreement that was agreed to on September twenty-fourteenth was the idea that, of twenty-fourteen, was that if it was separated into two separate properties and sold, that there would be separate water and sewer services in the event of the sale, transfer, or conveyance of those. None of these, these covenants state if then, none of these ideas were part of that, and one of those options only exists if they actually built out a condo. So the second part of your presentation that I heard is that if we accepted this offer, we would actually be potentially gifting something to a businessperson and creating a problem for us long-term. And while I want to be business-friendly, my first and our first responsibility is protect the city and a city's responsibility to not only current, but future landowners regarding applying them consistently, applying the rules consistently. So in your opinion, the recommendation you've made is something that we're doing inconsistently, not inconsistently, consistently as we would any other who came forward with a similar issue.
For the lot splits that have occurred before, they were required to do a connection for each of the lots that were split at the time the lot split occurred. So in response to Councilmember Starbucks' question about being business-friendly, the time that this should have been done would have been in two thousand and six when the lots were initially split. The city provided accommodations for the property owner at that point in time to say, yes, we, we know you don't know exactly what you're going to be doing with this, so that we won't enforce this change until you decide what you're going to be doing with the properties. So that's why the covenant wasn't actually signed and put in place until two thousand and fourteen. So I believe there was business-friendly circumstances provided because we didn't have that mandated at the time that the properties were sold. One thing I didn't bring up earlier was this would be something that would implement a precedent. So from here on out, we would have property owners that could be doing lot splits and would point to this recommendation and this finding and your decision as something that they could say, well, what about us? So it's not just for this one individual property, and I recognize the arguments that were presented by the property owner's representative, that this is an outsized lateral, but that will probably get lost in the next time that somebody else brings up this as a, let me do this, too, because the one thing that wastewater collections is doing, as you know, wastewater has a very large debt that has been being repaid for its treatment plant, and we're trying to minimize the rates that are being charged to customers, so there's not, it's not healthy enough to take on additional service lines as part of the collection system. So I'm not looking at this as an individual one-off item, I'm looking at it from the point of view of how will this affect us going down the line for other activities where we're trying to be business-friendly and also maintain the integrity of our collection system.
Question for our city attorney. Would this be considered a gift from the public that the ratepayers would potentially be upset by because it's something we're taking ownership of, that we really shouldn't be taking ownership of, and as a result, potentially a gift to that business owner?
I could see that argument being made because we do have an ordinance, which is the general rule that applies to all property owners in the city, that says every parcel is required to connect a lateral to a main if that parcel is adjacent to a street or easement where there is a main.
Thank you. I did see the city manager, okay, okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions from council for staff? Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, one quick question now, the easement that Mr. Sabani had suggested giving us, I understand why we don't want to accept it, but would that be the driveway that goes back to the property that fronts Oak?
Who is that a question to?
It's for Mr. Wilkie.
It would, yes. It, as far as, my understanding is that the existing six-inch line is in that driveway, yes.
So what you want to do is dig up the driveway to connect the rear parcel and dig up the street? Is that what the city's asking Mr. Sabani to do?
We're just asking for each parcel to be connected to the city main.
The Oak Street property doesn't face Pine Street, and there's no supply in the back, so he has to go through his frontage property on Pine, is what I'm seeing here, so he's got to dig up the existing property to install a separate lateral.
My understanding is that's already been done.
There's two lines underneath that driveway right now, Mr. Sabani?
Underneath the driveway, there's one six-inch sewer line.
Right.
And that was, that has been the service for both...
Sure, understand. Now, the question is, though, the Oak Street property or the old telephone company or the California Department of Agriculture that's back there is currently using that, and the DMV was using that.
Right.
So in order, for him, he's got to traverse a separate parcel that used to be his to get to the sewer main on Pine, right?
I'm not going to speak for the owner, but they could connect the Pine property, the front property, that's fronting Pine to the sewer ladder, to the sewer main, and the existing one could serve the back property that...
So what, they're going to trench up the building? Or, you know, I mean, it seems as though there's an easement that's already there for the church that came through, I'm sure in an escrow here.
First of all, let me respond to Mr. Wilkie's, what said, I'm sorry.
Actually, Mr. Morris, you, you really do need to just stick to the questions that are being asked.
I just want to respond when we, when we did the lot split at that time.
Mayor.
The city attorney has something.
Sorry, Mr. Sabani, but the appellant has made his presentation, and the floor now is with the council, so we do need to maintain order here, not turn this into an argument back and forth between the appellant and staff. So if a council member has a question for Mr. Sabani, that would be appropriate, but otherwise, it's in deliberations right now among the council.
I, I'm sorry, I was called to answer a question, I came up.
Yeah, well, it just, I guess where I'm trying to go with this, Mr. Wilkie, and I mean, I see Doran back here, you could interject any time, please. The property is Oak Street. He sold Pine. Now we're trying to get something from Oak Street out in Pine. It's, I, I think that there's like some kind of a weirdness happening here. I don't understand why he could not tie these... I might be missing the connection. There's a single line leaving the back. Victory Outreach Church ties into the six-inch line, and it goes all the way out into the main on Pine. This is true then, right? So if he was to keep the six-inch line that currently goes through his old property, Victory Outreach, it, then it's going to be up to Victory Outreach to put the line in in front, basically in front of where the church is. Is this a true statement?
Mr. Wilkie, I believe that was addressed, or it's the city manager?
I'll jump in here real quick. So yeah, that, that was one of the things is, the person in the back, that building in the back, could stay on that one lateral all the way out. The building in the front, if that's the church, they would then have to have a new pipe put in, new lateral going in and attaching into the main. And that was my concern is when the city attorney brought it up, is we have to follow what the code says, and by giving any kind of leeway or changes to it, we haven't followed what the code says in here. So I was asking the city attorney, is there anything in there that says we, as city or city council, is there a way to move off of that by an appeal process, saying, well, that one's okay? I don't believe there is, is that, do we have to follow what that is there, or can the council make that?
We do have to follow the rules in the code.
So that's my, that's my concern, is if we do make an adjustment for this one, we haven't followed the code as stated in here. It would have to be, the code would have to be amended.
Well, real quick then, if there's not a lateral for the rear property, is this code still in effect?
At the time, when there was one parcel, it was approved as we had the prior agreements. When it was sold off, that's when that should have gone into effect, where the second lateral, whichever front or back you want to look at, it should have gone into place, and it did not.
I recognize, Mr. Sabani, that you did sign a covenant about separating those lines, I just, I...
Councilmember Vega.
Mr. Troop, it looks like it can, it could be done, but we're going through a technicality here that says it should have been done when he owned the property. Now that the property is being sold, and they've done a lot split, is that what we're running into right now as far as the ordinance and the code, and why you're saying no?
Well, the, when, when it's, in the, the recorded document, it did say, the covenant said, when this is split, it will be done, and it wasn't done at that point in time. Now, my concern is that by giving a waiver with the appeal, we're not following what the code says, and that's where I'm, my job is to make sure we're following along with what the code...
I got you, and it sounds like it can be done, it just wasn't done in the right timeframe that was expected, and right now, they're saying no because it doesn't follow the ordinance or the code as it states because you're saying the main, any laterals have to go directly to the, to the main at a huge cost, and I see that, but Mr. Sabani also mentioned, Mr. Wilkie or Mr. Troop, that, I think you tried to clarify here that there is, there aren't any other situations like this in this city. Is that a true statement? Or you mentioned condominiums and common area, I was just wondering if you could give a couple of examples. Mr. Sabani, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask you that question.
Thank you. I said few location, in fact, across the street, if I said that thing, I have the picture of it. We have Rainbow Palaza across the street, has a six-inch sewer line connected to the main, and that apartment complex next door, the same thing. There are many locations in the city. First of all, this, I have been involved in this province in two thousand and six when I submitted the lot split. At that time, city carefully looked at this line, and they said that six-inch line was adequate, and they said, whenever you start developing, dedicate that line to the city. To me, the simplest solution would be here, city examined the line, asked, tell me, what should I do to repay, bring it up to the code, which is up to the code, if anything need to be done, and I give you the ten-foot easement, and city accept the line. City should provide, if, if a property owner has provided a sewer line per city standard, maintained, and is good, city has no other choice but to accept the sewer line because you cannot deprive any citizen from serving sewer line. And that's the situation. In the spirit of compromise, I came with this solution to accommodate this result of probability. Legally, I feel that six-inch sewer line is adequate, and city should accept the line. That's first alternate. And I should give, I give the easement, and city says, all right, we need two manholes of, I will do that. But city cannot refuse me service. In fact, the, the church has gone up there for about, since January, to get a permit to occupy the building, they have denied the occupancy because you don't have sewer line. To me, we have sewer line, has served the community, have served the building for fifty years. Suddenly, they are sweating here. Besides, this has gone before the planning commission, per the city staff, four times, and none of them have ever brought this issue.
So you've been denied a certificate of occupancy on this, for the same, this exact situation?
Yes.
Is that correct? And that's why you're here?
Yes.
To find a compromise?
Yes.
So that the building can be occupied and utilized?
Right, that's exactly what I'm here, really. I, I feel this is unfair to make me, to tear down the build, the road, that brand-new road, for something that is working and, and has no impact on city's sewer system. Now, if I was discharging some liquid or something that was impacting the city, I could see that. Nothing has changed as far as the function and operation. Only thing has changed, they found the code says that you have two separate lines, but and four other previous staffer have looked at it, they never brought it up, they said, whenever you're ready to sell the property, split the line or just dedicate the six-inch line. I'm willing to dedicate the six-inch line, and if six-inch, the six-inch line need another manhole or two manhole, I'm willing to construct. But to me, city should accept the thing. And secondly, they have given you a permit to do that. Why are they reneging on the permit?
I got you.
Permit is dated January eighteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Sabani, I think maybe other people have questions, sir.
Councilmember Cordova.
I don't really have a question, I just want to weigh in on it. To me, I'm not understanding as, that there has been a change, there was an agreement that took place prior, and the agreement was that upon the sell of one of the lots, then that you would then have to comply with the city's request per the ordinance to, to separate the lines and do that connection. So I, I'm not understanding that there's been a change on that end. What my concern would be is, is that once these parcels are sold, that then you would have, we have no way of controlling then what activities or what the occupancies or what the use of these parcels will be, and so once that has already been done, then whatever, again, I would think that the city would then be responsible for whatever comes into that.
For clarification, Mr. Troop, I believe the property has been sold, which is what has triggered it. One of the letters is actually in response to the Victory Outreach property having been sold.
That is correct, and just to clarify, what Councilmember Cordova said is correct, what, what happens today may change any point in time later down the road on what has actually been going on there. Just from my experience with the other agencies I was at, we never accepted anything other than attachments to the sewer main, only because that's the primary responsibility of the city, and I've had places where we had backups in the sewer main that we did have hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of cleanup to do in some of the buildings, and that's the reason you want to limit your liability to just the sewer main, not any of the attachments to it from the laterals.
And to reiterate, Mr. Wilkie, the reason this was triggered is it has been sold, the lot not only was split, but is now sold and has two separate owners, which is what triggered the requirement of this covenant be acted upon, which is separate the water and sewer service, otherwise, it would not have triggered it.
The property owner before the sale was, Mr. Sabani was coming into city hall to look at options, similar to the options that are presented up on the screen, well before the property sale. So he was aware that this was something that would be needing to be resolved before the properties were sold. Each time that Mr. Sabani would come in, we referred him back to the ordinance that says each property needs to be connected to sewer main individually, and I believe he was attempting to address the covenant that was in here prior to the actual sale of lots. So that didn't really trigger this, it was, the timing of them kind of overlapped, Mr. Sabani was trying to get it... Mr. Sabani was trying to get it resolved at the staff level before that sale occurred. But each of their, each of the suggestions that was made doesn't comply with the ordinance as provided by in 1316040. So while we've been trying to work with Mr. Sabani at the staff level, there's really nothing the staff level can do to allow him to do something other than what the ordinance provides for.
Councilmember Cordova.
But he was granted a permit.
I was not in the utility division at the time that was issued. I don't know what that permit is for, so apologize.
I believe it's for the split services of the, Mr. Luther.
Yeah, so that, if I'm correct, that that was a building permit to run a second lateral on his property? So the permit was only for, from his property, as far as I know? And it was issued by the building to permit that was not, to my understanding, routed to the utilities because it was on the property, not connecting to the utility?
And did we get an answer as to whether this would be considered a gift, or there's a value or fiscal impact to the general fund?
What I said is there's the potential for an argument that it could be a gift of public funds if we allow something to occur or give something that is in violation of our municipal code. What we have in our municipal code is the requirement that I stated earlier, that every parcel must connect to the main if the parcel is adjacent to a street or an easement where there is a main.
Any more questions for staff? Councilmember Starbuck.
This seems like it's a battle between common sense and a municipal code. I understand that the six-inch line, homes don't have it. Shopping centers, apartments, hotels, et cetera, use a line of that size. The grade that this line's going to be on is without question, like you say. How many degrees? Forty? It's incredible, so I, maybe the municipal code could have a little reference in it concerning an issue like this because the common sense factor here goes with Mr. Sabani. The legality of sitting on the dais goes with the city. And I'm really inclined to think that municipal code is a little bit of an overreach in this particular situation.
Any response from staff?
So when I came on board as the utility director, one of the things I was discussing with the wastewater division is their ability to maintain the existing sewer collection system. And they have a history of cameraing and researching and identifying where there are problems in a system. To add potentially one, and then likely others down the line, with some sort of exception that you're talking about, that would just add to the complexities that the collection system maintenance crew would have to deal with. And that would add costs to the utility that would have to be borne by all the utility customers.
Councilmember Starbuck.
But, Mr. Wilkie, you said this isn't anywhere else in town.
But if this is...
This would be the one additional burden.
Right, but it would also set a precedent, and future...
But there's no precedence to set if this is the only one in town.
There are other potential lot splits in town that could ask for the same exception.
Well, people aren't going to lot split six-inch, you know, lines. If this case, if you're doing a residential or something. But the other part that really is bad about this is the fact that there's no available service for Mr. Sabani on Oak Street. So we're forcing him to make a 140-foot run if that's the property, or else he's going to wind up having to do something on property he doesn't own anymore.
Which he agreed to in 2014. He agreed to do this in 2014.
I have the paper. This is the code. I'm using the common sense. So if this was the only one, and then again, now we're going to ask for problems. Well, Mr. Sabani's going to be getting problems with the 140-foot run. It's six-inch now, but he's not going to put six-inch back in for that rear property. I guess that we're not willing to do an exception or some kind of a addendum to this code.
Any more questions of council for staff before I open for public comment? City Attorney.
Thank you. I would just say that it is within the discretion of the council to amend the code after input from staff. That is something that the council can do.
Thank you. And we'll open the floor to public comment on this issue.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills, I guess I should say I'm a prophet. How timely is this argument? I think we should err on the side of the citizen. We're here to support citizens, business, economic, and housing development growth. If you need to make exceptions to the code, or some kind of waiver or addition, or perhaps if there's a situation where a person could attach some kind of insurance policy to the exception, or what can you do to help the citizen? That should be number one. I've had so many Lompoc old timers tell me about how it used to be, and how people did so many different things, and had different shops and different buildings and whatever, and why is that gone? I think we've gotten too much to, you know, these are the very restrictive regulations and the zoning. We need to open it up. We need to put the citizen first, certainly consider health and safety, but citizen first. How can we make it work out? It seems a reasonable request.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So I want to share with you several other sewer lines that I'm familiar with in Lompoc, and I imagine there's quite a few more. So I think you all know the, in front of the 99-cent store, there's a Chinese restaurant and the burger place. And the sewer line, which belongs to the city from that facility, extends across that parking lot. It picks up the vet and surf connection. It then goes across the Chrysler property. It was relocated when the Hilton Garden Inn was built, and kind of goes like this. And then it drops into the main at the, in the North Avenue alley. So that crosses at least three, and I think five parcels, because the shopping center is actually parceledized. Then, the other one that comes to mind is in the shopping center where Caros, I'm sorry, where Baker Square formerly was. And that line was built by the developer of the shopping center, and it starts at North Avenue, and it goes across the shopping center, and then it crosses the vacant lot, which I believe is also part of the shopping center. And then it actually connects to Rabobank. And so, and that is also, some portion of that is a city line, even though it connects to multiple buildings, it connects to the restaurant and both the shopping center buildings. So clearly, in the past, things have been done differently. Now, that being said, you're stuck in a position here where you have to make a decision about what's more reasonable and easily done, or what is in the actual letter of the code as the staff interprets it, and I don't have any reason to believe they're wrong. So you have a six-inch line that comes from the rear parcel, and a new four-inch line that comes from the front parcel, and they meet at the sidewalk. And what the city is asking is that the sidewalk in the street be dug up to a depth of 14 feet, so that that new four-inch line coming out of the former GTE building, now Victory Outreach, connects directly to a sewer line that's 14 feet down. I don't think Mr. Sabani ever answered the question, but I'm going to guesstimate that that's a $30,000 deal. And that's okay, you know, it's his money. But it's also tearing up the street and the sidewalk. And as we all know, after you dig it up and put it back, the street doesn't function the way it used to. So we could do for him what we have obviously done for others in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. I realize that this is a difficult thing, and I appreciate Mr. Sabani's investment in our community. And I realize, thanks to Mr. Lynn, that yes, there are exceptions to the rules, given our history and our hodgepodge growth and the amalgamation of things that happen. But these rules have been in place, and we need to start respecting them and not create additional scenarios as we move forward that create exceptions. If there's something that needs to be addressed in the ordinance, then we need to bring the ordinance back and direct staff to redo the ordinance. But at this moment, based on the ordinance that exists, and the fact that we need to start treating everyone exactly the same and not making exceptions here and there and creating precedence, I believe that we need to request that Mr. Sabani follow the 2014 mandate and separate the water lines and sewer services. That would be my recommendation, is to deny the appellate's request and implement what the city has asked him to do, and gave him time to do, and delayed and delayed, and now that the building is sold and is separately owned by two entities, to follow through on that covenant from 2014. I would love a second on that one.
Mayor?
Yes.
Since this is an appeal, the council's decision needs to be in writing with findings, so I would ask, if you would, to amend your motion to request the staff bring back a resolution to the next meeting placed on the consent calendar that will just reflect the council's decision tonight.
I can do that. So done. Councilmember Vega.
Mr. City Attorney, if I want to make another alternate motion, am I able to, being that the mayor's made one and it needs to be done in writing? Can I make an alternate motion that can also be brought back in writing if that's the way it's supposed to be?
Yes. First, we should see whether the mayor's motion has a second.
Okay.
And then, if it doesn't, then you can proceed. If it does, then you can make a substitute motion.
Okay.
I would second the first motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Cordova has seconded my motion.
Okay, now, Councilmember Vega, you can make a substitute motion. That will be voted on first.
Can I be recognized before I'm not recognized? Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Councilmember Vega.
Appreciate that. Anyway, I'd like to make an exception, or bring back a motion, that we make an exception to the ordinance. The business-friendly atmosphere and what we do, I understand, but the fact that a permit was issued once upon a time, and all, and the interpretation was a little bit different, but it went along with it. Yes, Mr. Sabani, some of the timeframes have expired, but I understand the fact that you didn't know what was going in the building, so I guess there was some reluctance to spending the money when you weren't sure exactly who was going to own it. But I think that we should move forward in a more correct manner to bring back the ordinance, Lompoc Municipal Code, Section 13.16.014, and bring back so we can discuss an exception to that ordinance, so that we're following the rules. But I think in many of these ordinances, it's also, there's also an attachment on many of these ordinances that say that it's at the discretion of the utility director also. I'm not sure in this, this case, whether that verbiage also applies to the ordinances within the utility code. So I'd like to make that motion, and I'd appreciate a second on that so we go back. That's a substitute motion to bring back the ordinance, to come back and discuss an exception to the ordinance, so that we can possibly make something happen here that's a little different.
Common sense forces me to second this.
Okay, Councilmember Vega?
Yes, sir.
Are what, is what your motion asking to do is to bring back the ordinance for a potential amendment to the ordinance, to make an exception for certain situations that might be similar to Mr. Sabani's situation?
Yes, sir, and not to, not to deny his appeal at this time.
Okay, and so, the hearing on his appeal would need to be continued then until such time as the ordinance is amended, if the council decides to amend it?
Yes, sir, and I think that's only fair. I understand the ordinance is in place for a reason, but I think we also have the authority to make an exception by consensus.
If that is your motion, and if that passes, we do need to have Mr. Sabani agree on the record to extend the time period for his, for the decision on his appeal to the time that the council brings it back, because the code requires us to make a decision on his appeal within 60 days, and we're already, we're close to that 60-day mark right now, so...
Can we provide an extension to his appeal also, within this motion?
He will need, he will need to agree to that if the motion passes.
So we need to vote on the motion first before we make the request?
Yes.
So I, are you, okay. So we have a substitute motion on the floor. It's been seconded, and any discussion, any questions regarding it? All right, let's vote. And that ties at 2-2, so City Attorney?
So that's a failed motion, so now we go back to the motion of Councilmember Mayor Osborne.
Thank you. So the original motion was to deny the appeal and create a written list of those reasons and bring back for consent calendar at a later date. It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that one fails.
Okay, so we have a situation here where we have four council members where we're hearing an appeal. What happens if we're hearing an appeal and there's a tie? A tie cannot overturn the appeal. I mean, a tie cannot overturn the director's decision. So what that means is, is that the director's decision stands unless the council were able to make a motion for something else tonight that would pass. If we can't get either of the motions that you made to pass, then the director's decision stands, and Mr. Sabani's appeal is denied.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Cordova.
I'd like to make a motion to potentially maybe bring it back for another, at the next council meeting, to give maybe a little bit more time, for me particularly, to get a little bit more information, and be able to potentially consider a different alternative vote.
I'll second.
That has a move and a second.
Mayor?
Yes.
And again, the next council meeting is June 4th, which is one day after the 60-day deadline, so if this passes, Mr. Sabani will need to agree to that on the record.
Okay. Any additional questions for staff at this point? Any other discussion? Okay. And that passes 3-1. Mr. Sabani, do you agree to the extension as Mr. Malave will state appropriately?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we need Mr. Sabani. The council is required to make a decision on your appeal by June 3rd. The next council meeting is June 4th, so we'd ask that you just make, that you agree to allow us to bring your appeal to the June 4th council meeting.
I will agree. Thank you.
City Clerk, do we have any written communications? Thank you. And now we open the, oh, yes. I think he knows to come back. He's returning on his own. And now I'll open the floor for the last oral communication of the evening regarding city matters. It's for two minutes. Please come forward. Seeing no one rise, we will close the last oral communication and bring it back to council for comments and reports. Start with Councilmember Mosby.
You know, if the, where was the gentleman from the bakery? And I didn't hear anybody move on it, so my, one of the things I'd like to do is honor his request for an appeal, but the interceptors are starting off fast here. I didn't get which bakery it was, but I would need a second or third to bring back the request for appeal.
I would second that.
Councilmember Cordova and Councilmember Starbuck?
Yes.
Okay, so you have your three.
Okay, is that, do we need to vote on it? Do I need to make more of a motion on that?
Well, we got three votes to bring back... Well, we got three votes to bring back that as a future agenda item. I just, I mean, we can bring back a staff report on it, but I don't know what the status of that appeal is, whether a written appeal has been filed, whether the written appeal is timely, whether his appeal today is timely. We can bring back a report on that, and the council can decide what it'd like to do on it.
Okay. And I guess maybe you can make contact with the person to make sure that documentation is whatever line it is and such, right? Whether he's, and actually, if the timeframe has expired, we could still make the motion anyways to discuss the appeal.
That would be addressed in the staff, I believe you can, but that's something I'd address in the staff report to you when we bring the item back.
And I amend my appeal to the comments that were brought forward with the city attorney, if the second or the third would go along on that as well? The other one was another appeal that came by another company, the dental facility, was asking for appeal. Again, I would make the same recommendation of that appeal potentially coming back with a staff report if they could, as the recommendations made with the city attorney. And it, need a second or a third on that one. And that was the electric parking stalls. Called up Build Out Pros.
This was the concerning of the two charging stations?
Yes.
Again, I don't know what the status of that application is. I don't know if their timeline to appeal, their conditions of approval has expired, but we can bring back a report on that to the council and address whether the council can hear that appeal.
Okay. Very good. Is it just according, I got a second?
I'll give you a second.
So we have a second.
And they get a third?
I got, oh, sorry. I'll do that.
Councilmember Cordova gives you your third.
The other one is, I heard something from, about the Holiday Inn Express. And I know there might be a potential conflict among the council members, so I'm making much the same as well with the city attorney coming back with staff report and the conditions of that appeal. And if I could get two others with that one as well.
And before you ask for two others, I want to make sure Councilmember Cordova does not participate in this request.
Okay. I would need two others to that one as well.
I'll give you a second.
Yeah. Third.
I have a second and a third on that one. I am also going to make a request that we get a vacancy report monthly so we can see the status and situations of our city employees, where they are. I understand there's quite a few vacancies that are out there, but I think the council should be on top of it. Along in that vacancy report, the positions that were filled that month. So positions that filled that month as well as the positions that were vacated that month. And I think it's something that we need to be watching a little more closely, and I would need a second or a third for that.
Councilmember Cordova?
I would second that.
I'll third.
Okay. The other thing that was asked was an organizational chart. I've heard it asked a couple times. Don't wait to take your thunder, Councilmember Cordova, but I agree, it's been asked. And I know there wasn't a second or a third that came along with it. I think that's something to some component, we shouldn't necessarily rise to the second or third. It's something should be offered, but I would gladly, need a second or a third to get that to move forward.
City Manager?
So, Mayor, Councilmember Mosby, we are working on that. We've been trying to get that done. It's not an easy one to do. I've had to find staff that can work on it. What it entails is not just putting people's names on there. We're actually putting the names, and then we have to dissect in, for example, like for City Manager, it'll have my name, my number, my title, but then the breakout of where my salaries go. That was the request that came forward. So that alone takes some time, let alone the staff members trying to compile all that is working. And some places you might have one employee and they do this only. Well, with the city, because we're allocated out, it's doing different jobs, or a job, but allocated out. So it's taking longer to do it than you would hope to in a normal private business. So we are working towards it. We have not forgotten it. It's just a very long time.
Okay. I understand you have difficulty finding a program that worked for the bubble chart and such like that, but is there, is there something maybe you could even input in a manual component or something that could get this? I know it's been, I think, I don't know, Councilmember Starbuck's been asking for a while, not rolling into more?
Right. We have the, we've been doing the, oh, I can't remember the name of it now, Vizio we were using. So it's doing it. It's just a matter of, staff is doing it in between their other jobs. We just, we don't have, I've lost enough staff that I don't have dedicated people that I can give certain projects to.
Then I guess with that, then I would ask that it be expedited. I need a second or a third to expedite this. And I know we're going into the budget session, we're asked to make a bunch of suggestions and such, and I think it's information that we get there. So a second and a third to help expedite that?
Councilmember Mosby, I'm sorry, but asking for the organizational chart and expediting it is an action that the council is taking rather than just a request for an agenda item. So you can ask for that yourself. You can ask for an agenda item to come back about it with a second and a third.
Okay. There we go. I'll ask about it to come back with a second and a third. Second?
Councilmember Cordova?
I was just going to say that when, my request for the organizational chart, it was for the departments, the current positions in those departments, identifying whether there's vacancies or non-vacancies, and then salaries. You're not required to put names on there for me.
Right. Well, excuse me, it's, we can take them off at the time, but we can use them for later so we can cover them up. So it was just putting them in at that point.
I need, I got a second and a third for that to come back?
No, I gave you a second.
I would say third.
All right. So you have your second and third with Vega and Cordova. As an agenda item, yes.
The other thing is that I'm looking for, and that is the ADUs, auxiliary dwelling units. From my understanding, in the past, we weren't charging impact fees, and somewhere it's come about that we're charging impact fees. So I would like that to come back as a staff report and what policy we're using and stuff to charge impact fees. And it's, anyhow, come back as a staff report as such for the ADUs. And I would need a second or a third for ADU discussion and relating to impact fees.
Excuse me, Councilmember, could you be a little more clear? I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for, so I can write.
A staff report about the ADUs and the impact fee component that we're charging and how it is that we're charging the impact fees. And I would need a second and a third for that.
Second?
Third.
The other thing is the utility commission meeting. I was at the last one, and there was a presentation done by Dean Albro about Calper's presentation. And I don't know, can we bring that one?
I believe that was made by myself, not by Dean.
Okay. Well, he was there. Could we have that presentation? I don't know, the City Manager could just have that one. It wasn't very long, but I think it was, the rest of the council would be appropriate to see some of the suggestions that were made.
I can get with Brad and.
The, let's see, let's see. Okay. These are me, I want to make a comment, two quick comments. One is about the community meeting for Prop 68, Pioneer Park, Wednesday, the 22nd, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And then there's another meeting from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at JM Park. This is about potential grant funding and stuff to how to help fix the park. So those people are interested, come to those meetings. It's important that we get public input. Another thing is, I did represent the city of Lompoc both at Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District meeting as well as SB CAG. There's a document that's been posted on the bulletin board. There was concerns about relationship with the Air Pollution Control District had in relationship to cannabis. And there's a document out here. Is it available online as well? Clerk? The document I gave you about the cannabis?
Cannabis.
Okay. Well, it's out there on the bulletin board. I know there's been some questions about essence and such. The last thing, apologize for taking up the time, but I spent a little time going over back, back and forth over the budget documents that were provided us. It was a lengthy discussion. And apologize, I don't have it on the overhead for the people, but I'll give you page numbers. And had a few concerns of what's going on, and a lot of what's hitting us real fast, and we don't really have capability of making a great discussion with this. We're hit with a lot of pages of data, and it makes it kind of difficult for us to wrap around. The first page that I have here is page 137 of the fiscal year biennial budget, 17, 18, 18, 19 budget. And these are the assumption pages and the input components and the output components, the 10-year estimates that we were using. We estimated TOT to be 3% increase in revenues, property tax 3.5%, and sales tax of 4%. The second page is out of our first set of April's budget workshop, and primarily looking at the revenue component. And it was never really discussed to us what's going on with revenues. And if you look at what we had as an actual number, we had a $33 million revenue estimated for fiscal year ending 2018. And again, that was page six of our April budget meeting, so page 13 of our April budget meeting, I have the revenue component for that fiscal year, and it's an actual number of $34,791,000. Now, if you go and you look at the next page, it's page 13 of the most recent budget meeting that we had, and the revenue component on 2019, 20 is $34,516,000. Kind of curious, because that number is $275,000 less, this is our future year, than our current fiscal year. Not sure, and I haven't heard any discussion of why our revenues are going down $275,000. And then for the year 2020 and 2021, we will only increase $476,211 greater than our current fiscal year. So I'm not quite sure. We didn't get to that discussion about why revenues. And again, I'm just making this as a comment, I'm not trying to get into discussion. Just something that I had time to go back over and look. Now, curiously, if you go look at our current budget book that we're operating under, and if you look at page 138, you would see that there are budget. I highlighted it in pink. You would see what our revenue estimates were in the 10-year projections. And if you look at those revenue analysis of, again, it was only off $200,000 for 18, 19, but in this case, it was a million and a half off revenues for 19, 20, and $2 million off 2020 and 2021. Not sure why this is happening. We never got to that level of discussion. But if you add those two up, for some reason, we're getting $3.5 million short than was estimated in the budget book, and we've had no discussion of why our estimated budget revenues are going to be less than $3.5 million. Again, it's just something that I came across. It might be something you guys want to dig into your own thing, but it's a comment I wanted to make, that's something that I'm curious about. I did, I'm still working, trying to get an answer to it. But I think that when we enter into budget, again, a comment component here, that we should have more discussion about budget and budget numbers, revenue estimates, where we're going, where we're coming from, instead of what happened the last two meetings. Something that I know three of us on council said no to, and I think it's important that we get down to budget and we discuss budgets. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can get a copy of that too, just so I know what's going.
I'll make sure you have one. Councilmember Starbuck?
No reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega?
Just a quick question of the city attorney. When the, just for clarification, when the council makes a council request and they ask for it to be within a certain timeframe, is that within the parameters of our request here? Because it seems that, I just want clarification. If we say we need it back in 30 days, 60 days, maybe you could clarify.
Yes, the council is allowed to request that it come back and order that it come back within a certain period of time. At the time that you request that, staff might make some comments about how that may not be possible, or staff doesn't have the resources to do it in that period of time. But the council does have the authority to request and/or order that it come back in a certain period of time.
Thank you very much. It's very important for us to know. We've met, and maybe because of staff restraints here, we've met some resistance here and sometimes in timeframes. And sometimes what we've had from previous council meetings or the year previous, they, sometimes they never come back, some of our council requests. So that's why I'm saying maybe it's better for us to put a timeframe and hold them to it. I'd like to remind everybody Memorial Day's coming up this next Monday, and there will be a presentation here at the cemetery at 11 o'clock. So I'd like to invite everybody. I'm sure the Post 125 would appreciate it. It's a really great event, and I think most of our council members, if not all of us, will be attending at 11 o'clock on Monday. Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova?
I attended my planning commission meeting this month, as well as a meeting at Vandenberg Air Force Base with my AETC group.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosby?
I apologize. I had one last thing. I got sidetracked there. And that is, again, the snowy plover at the beach component. And if I could pass out to council members who might be interested in helping gathering signatures to get them off to support opening up our beach and the fact that I believe that humans and plovers have been able to get along together, and I think we have an opportunity for them. So if any council members would be interested, I have 15 clipboards and some areas on here where some signatures can add on. I think it might bring an opportunity. And I remember economic development in the days there, it used to be a very supportive that drew a number of people to our community, and was a place for our people to recurate. So with that, I'm done. Thank you.
I attended the shelter shower last weekend at Bridge House. They've made some amazing improvements, along with Mr. Ashmala making an investment in the community garden they're trying to improve. I did the community walk with Boys and Girls Club the same Saturday. I attended the Parks and Rec Commission. I spoke at Alpha Club on city issues. I attended the League of City Council's Channel County Dinner, representing the city. Some interesting information as a result of that was, there was a bill, I believe it was SB 50, it could be AB 50, I just remember the number at this point, that was trying to go through our state legislature that would tie our SB 1 funds to housing requirements. It got caught up in committee, and that's a good thing because they're two separate issues, and we desperately need those funds, so not having it tied to housing is very important. So I wanted to share that with you. I don't have a staff request as much as I have a council request. I realize we all want things done, and I realize it's our responsibility to request them, but we are short-staffed in so many areas. And until we satisfy the budget discussion and know where we're moving forward, to continue to ask for and put short timelines on staff makes it difficult for them to actually deliver in that timeframe. We're setting ourselves up for failure. So please be considerate when you're making staff requests as to that timeframe, if we have the actual people to do the work so that we, as a community, can deliver professional quality staff reports and make good decisions based on the ability to have staff to do that work. So that's my only request, and it's actually of council. We will adjourn to the next Lompoc City Council meeting on 6:30 p.m. on June 4th, 2019. Don't forget to come to Tuesday's budget meeting on the 28th. Thank you.